Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's Special Committee of the Whole Meeting. I call this meeting to order, and I kindly ask our City Administrator to please take the role call.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Burghart?
Burghart here.
Ruby?
Ruby here.
Kaben?
Here.
Kilberg?
Here.
Kosterog?
Here.
I didn't hear that. Maladra? Okay. Marx?
Marx here.
McGowan, thumbs up? Can you hear me? McGowan, can you hear me? Swanson?
Swanson here.
All right, so McGowan, can you hear me? We need to...
I think she's gonna call in. She doesn't have audio.
Okay, so let's wait a minute and make sure that she gets in.
Yeah.
We'll just wait one moment, folks. Thanks for your patience.
Hey, hi, this is Jeanie.
Okay, Jean, just say that, your name, and present.
Jean McGowan, present.
Thank you. All present, Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we entertain a motion, and a second to put the matter before us this evening on the floor for discussion, I do have some remarks I'd like to deliver. To my colleagues on the City Council, you have heard these remarks before through various email messages to you, so I ask for your indulgence while I repeat them. I'm repeating them tonight for the benefit of those who are joining us here in the chamber, and of course, those of us, or those of you who are tuning in either through Comcast, or AT&amp;T, or streaming online. Again, good evening to the older women and older men, our residents, businesses, and interested parties from near and far who are tuned into this broadcast. On Thursday, November 19th, at approximately 2:00, I emailed the City Council the following message. The subject line, "Request for consideration and availability to participate in Special Committee of the Whole Meeting on November 23rd, 2020, for the express purpose stated below." The email was also in bold letters stamped with, "To avoid violating the Illinois Public Meetings Act, please do not respond all." Ladies and gentlemen, over the course of the last few weeks, I've spoken to some of you and received information from others about rising concerns from residents, businesses, and guests in our community, querying, quote, "What can Geneva do better to educate and enforce the directives enumerated in Governor Pritzker's and the IDPH's executive orders?" End quote. To best address the options we have at our disposal, I'm asking if you, the council, would be interested in and available for a Special Committee of the Whole Meeting on Monday, November 23rd, for the express purpose of discussing and considering adoption of a public nuisance ordinance, as other communities have done or are considering doing, granting our Police Department the authority to issue ordinance violations to individuals and/or businesses who are violating the Governor's and IDPH's executive orders. I kindly ask that you send a note to Stephanie confirming your interest and availability to participate in such a meeting by 3:00 tomorrow, Friday, November 20th, so we have the requisite amount of time to notice a meeting under the Illinois Public Meetings Act from Monday, November 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. I signed it. Thank you. My initials, KB, and my cellphone number, 630-742-8916. Ladies and gentlemen, each and every alderman responded with an expression of both interest and availability, and hence, a quorum was reached, and this meeting was scheduled. And it's important to note that every alderman is present tonight. On Friday, November 20th, at approximately 4:00 p.m., tonight's meeting agenda and packet was posted online and sent to the aldermen accordingly. Included in the packet was an executive summary, which is standard operating procedure, and draft ordinance, which is also standard operating procedure. The key elements of the executive summary are as follows. Consider ordinance amending Title V, Health and Sanitation of the Geneva City Code by adding Chapter IV, Public Health. The executive summary reads, "The draft ordinance presented for the Committee of the Whole's consideration provides the city a tool with which to enforce the Governor's executive orders, issued in furtherance of the public health, safety, and welfare. If adopted, violations of any lawfully issued executive order could be declared a public nuisance. Any person accused of a violation may settle and compromise the claim of violation by paying a fine. If the Committee of the Whole desires, the ordinance, either in current form or an amended form, could proceed to the December 7th, 2020 City Council meeting." Again, in the packet, there's a draft of the ordinance. As the aldermen know, and ladies and gentlemen tuning in and present should know, this ordinance was modeled after the ordinance in Rockford, another non-home rule community here in the state of Illinois. I want to stress, and I want to emphasize, and perhaps underline, that our discussion this evening is not about exclusively restaurants and bars. As some have contended, there is no language in the executive summary or draft ordinance that identifies exclusively restaurants and bars. As calls and emails started to flood into our staff, my colleagues in the City Council, as well as myself, and including the Police Department, I sent the council a note explaining how I was responding to multiple inquiries. That email reads as follows. It's from me, it's to the aldermen, copy the entire administrative team, and it reads as follows. "Once again, to avoid violating the Illinois Open Meetings Act, please do not respond all. Ladies and gentlemen, I imagine you too are receiving calls and emails about the nature of tomorrow night's discussion, and, like you, I'm sure some of the calls and emails are, dare I say, intense. Therefore, in the spirit of full transparency and for your benefit, I have responded to all the email messages, as well as texts and phone calls, with the following message. Monday night's Special Committee of the Whole discussion is taking place because of a rise in the number of questions over the course of the last few weeks to City Council members and professional staff, including police officers, about, quote, 'what the city of Geneva is doing to help reduce the transmission rate of COVID-19, and what more can be done, if anything,' end quote. We have received calls from retailers, restaurateurs, and shoppers alike. Therefore, now is the time for the City Council to have a robust and frank discussion about what more it wants to consider, if anything, within the ramparts of state and local laws. There are, for all practical purposes, and this is indeed the crux of our discussion this evening, two camps in the city of Geneva. The first is the, quote, "You need to do more" camp, and the second is the, quote, "Continue to do what you're doing" camp. As all of you know, the former, "You need to do more" camp is best described in the draft ordinance included in the Special Committee of the Whole packet. Do we, shall we, must we pursue a more aggressive approach to seek compliance with face masks, social distancing, large gatherings, et cetera, as enumerated in Tier III of the Resurgence Mitigation Efforts? The draft ordinance does not, repeat, does not include a staff recommendation, and nor should it. The later, the latter approach, "Continue doing what you're doing," is best captured and summarized by the three Rs that all of you have heard me say before. The three Rs are: Respond to alleged violations. Remind the alleged violator of the Tier III rules. And relay said contact with the business or the individual to the Kane County Health Department and State's Attorney's Office for follow-up. I have invited everyone who has reached out to me to participate in tomorrow night's meeting, assuring them that their voice is important, respected, and desired. As always, feel free to call, text, or email me with any questions. Again, signed with the initials KB, cellphone 630-742-8916. Finally, let me add this. Oops, correction. Forgive me, folks. Let me add this, folks. Tonight, the City of Geneva Council Chamber is once again serving as the community's kitchen table. The place that families often choose for conversations that require the full attention of all participants, respect for all opinions, and our best efforts to come to consensus as a family on how to move forward. With that, the question on the floor this evening is again best summarized as choosing between whether we continue what we're doing, as enumerated with the three Rs, or consider doing more, as presented in the draft ordinance. With that, I will entertain a motion to put this matter on the floor, as written in our agenda this evening, under Item 2, and that is, to consider draft ordinance amending Title V, Health and Sanitation of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion?
Bruno, so much.
Bruno makes the motion. I believe that was Alderman Ruby.
Ruby, second.
This matter is on the floor. We will proceed as we always do. I'd like to entertain comments or questions from our members of the City Council, acting as the Committee of the Whole this evening. And for my benefit, if you'll indulge me, I'm gonna ask whomever wishes to speak, just raise your hand. I'll do my darndest to recognize you, and I apologize in advance if my...
Swanson will have to speak.
And Alderman Swanson, just simply chime in. So I'll just go from, like Hollywood Squares, from the top to the right, Alderman Maladra, any questions or comments?
I have comments. I hope, I hope are relevant, because they're kind of long. So I'll begin by saying that, as is the case with every complex issue that comes before us, for every opinion I've heard, on one side of the issue, there's another opinion on the opposite side. So whatever position I take tonight is gonna anger somebody. That's just the way it is with difficult decisions. And it's often the case with complex issues that I'm trying to find a happy medium between the two sides, and that happy medium may not exist. It's easy to say that we should aim to stop the spread of coronavirus while at the same time protecting the economy, but doing that is tricky, and this virus is so pervasive, and emphasizing one side of the equation is to transfer pain and suffering to the other side. I believe that it's within our control as individuals and businesses to find a way of doing business while fighting the virus. The measures we need to follow and the situations we need to avoid have been known to us for some time. Yet here we are, eight months into it, and the spread of the virus is accelerating. Hospital capacity is declining. This is fact. The information is available to everyone at public health department websites. So that's the reality, and that has to be our starting point. From there, I'm no longer interested in hearing what we cannot do, or even what we should not do. I want to start hearing about what we can do and what we should do. I'm frustrated that we're in a position of having this discussion, because what we're actually talking about is what to do, if anything, when the law is being openly defied. It's a very slippery slope when you choose the laws that do apply to you and do not apply to you. We're told that the Governor's executive order is not the law, and that the courts have invalidated it, but I don't think that's true. And an executive order is the law until the courts decide that it isn't. But that's a matter for lawyers to decide, and even for us tonight, all we're talking about is when an executive order is appropriately established and substantiated. So the matter before us is what are we to do when the law is being openly and deliberately ignored? And the answer to that, I think, depends on a number of things. It depends on what we're, what we are allowed to do under the law, because after all, we're expected to follow the law, even by those who are not following it themselves. It depends on our ability to enforce whatever we decide to do. There is nothing to be gained by taking the symbolic stance that people just continue to openly defy. And it depends on what outcome we're trying to achieve, which, to my mind, brings me back to trying to find that, that happy medium, finding a way to get the virus under control while at the same time protecting the economy. To my mind, I believe the Governor's order is attempting to do just that. The mitigation plan is tiered such that the economic impact increases only as health impact increases, and it focuses on areas of most risk for the spread of the virus. If push comes to shove, then, in looking at the, stop the spread of the virus and protect the economy, I will take the path that preserves the capacity of our hospitals to treat all patients, whether it be for COVID, or for disc ruptures, or for hernia surgeries, or for whatever, because that is what's really at stake from the spread of the virus. The ability for someone to survive COVID, or any other serious illness, depends on access to medical facilities, equipment, and professionals, and those are being strained as the virus spread accelerates. So that's a long-winded way of me saying I would like to hold people and businesses accountable for their actions. But you all know me, so I argue with myself, and I see another side. Assuming this is something that we can do, and something that we can enforce, and it's definitely something I want to do, I'm still not sure if it's something we should do. Personally, I wonder if punitive action is the only means we have of ensuring adherence to the mitigation plan requirements. Could we flip it around and instead provide incentives for those people and businesses who do adhere to the mitigation plan, who do play by the rules? Any discussion of incentives or assistance will be as complicated as the discussion about fines and punitive measures. The same questions about what we can do legally and financially, and what our objectives are, will apply. But whatever we determine we can do could be directed only to those businesses that, and people who do play by the rules. Some may see that as being unfair, but I think it's unfair to choose to defy the law, placing people and businesses choosing to follow it at its disadvantage, and putting the health of yourself ahead of the threat to the public caused by the spread of the virus. So what I'm saying is, what I'm saying we should do is, I favor the carrot over the stick, if possible, and I would like to find a way to recognize those who are working within the law. Until we can do that, I believe we do need to be able to respond seriously to those businesses and people who most egregiously defy the executive order. We hear all the time that, aside from the Tier III mitigation plan, all other restrictions are being followed, and if that's the case, I think that we have to respect it. But then I also hear from people that there are examples where social distancing is not being followed, capacity constraints are not being followed. And I know that there are even some businesses that are advertising for events that will draw groups of people. I would like to have some recourse for the situations where the public welfare is nothing more than an afterthought at best. So I offered these comments only as a starting point. I like to do that. I throw some ideas out there, and I get to see how all the rest of you knock those down or enhance them. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Some, some good points by Alderman Maladra. Pardon me. I think those incentives that you bring up, Alderman, I like the idea. I'm not sure if we have the scope under the rubric of this meeting to discuss those, because I think there are... I, I, I'm very open to being much more proactive in terms of supporting our business community, but it gets complicated and potentially expensive. So, to my, to my remarks, well, it's a, it's a very unprecedented situation that we're in. All of us here, regardless on where we end up with this sort of ordinance, highly, highly value and appreciate and enjoy the vibrant and diverse business community that we have. What we discussed tonight is the concept of selecting between two unpleasant options, and I'm not sure that there's really middle ground here. That's, it's, I think this has been the most challenging thing, as, as Alderman Maladra says. You know, flagrant violations, excuse me, of the law versus containing the virus, and it's sometimes hard to strike a, a middle ground there. Unfortunately, we're on a trajectory where soon each of us will personally know someone that has died from COVID. The, the math is just pointing to that. Some of you probably already do. I haven't had anyone close to me pass from COVID yet, thankfully. So we have to weigh the economic cost of protecting the lives of our residents. As I drive around the city, I, I see, my sense is it's, is the exception that businesses are observing the mitigation orders, though I can't say for sure. There's a big windows that I can see from the street. Some businesses, at personal costs, supporting them, are supporting the mitigation efforts out of concern for public health, and I, my deep admiration goes out to those businesses. Others are violating the mitigation, mitigation orders, because after the first shutdown and the body blows that that delivered, their very survival as a business might well be at stake. My heart aches for those businesses, and I think all of ours do. There's still others that violate the order out of some principle feeling that the governor overstepped authority, or out of some perverse interpretation of personal freedom, but your personal freedom doesn't usurp public health. So I approached the, I've been, I've been approaching this as follows. The numbers are real. The virus is real. The most rigorous analyses, which is year-over-year deaths, strongly indicate that COVID deaths are appreciably underreported. The physics of such pathogens' transmission are well-understood. Dry air and closed spaces without masks where people are conversing in close proximity for extended periods, especially in loud environments, is tailor-made to maximize virus transmission. Expert opinion and the science is consistent. The attendance at the venues cited in the Governor's orders do contribute to the spread of the virus. At this juncture, we don't have standards for indoor air quality that could reasonably guarantee that these venues keep air from, exhaled air from one patron drifting past another. I, I think in coming years, HVAC standards are gonna be much different for, for new construction, hopefully some retrofits. So there's real discussion to be had about which approach will cause more damage in both economic and public health terms. But doesn't exacerbating the pandemic also protract the economic hardship of the business community and the community generally? Such things are necessarily subjective and speculative. We're also ill-equipped to place a dollar value on human life, something that we can't avoid in discussions like this. While there's interesting philosophical and practical discussions on the value of human life, we as a society generally place a very high value on that, so much so that it invariably skews the calculus in these types of discussions. I've gotten public feedback, both pro and con, on this ordinance. I've been told that punishing our business is ridiculous. I've been told that the fines should be doubled. I've been told that non-compliant businesses are abusing the compliant businesses. In the end, I find it hard to not side with public health on this matter. It's been suggested that we might begin with a warning before we get to the monetary fines. Mixed feelings on that. I don't think there's any business that isn't fully aware of the restrictions put on their business through these, through these orders. If, if the warning is ostensibly to clue someone in as a courtesy, they might not be familiar with it. I think that's rather redundant. I think everyone knows that. And it just protracts the outbreak by, by delaying meaningful action. I do have concerns about the role that our police play in this. If this council decides that it's in the greater community interest to put enforcement teeth to mitigation, I do not want to put our officers in the position of making subjective calls and sullying the relationship between the business community, the greater community, and our police. I'm, I'm hoping by very specific list of fines that we can take that subjective piece out of it. Separate from this discussion, though, as I mentioned earlier, I think there's much more that the city might be able to do, if we really sit down and think about it. I would, I would really like to have a broader discussion as to what we, what we might be able to do to support the business community until we can achieve some, some type of normalcy. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Marx, any comments or questions at this time?
Yeah, I mean, I think I can pretty much, it's, it's a major issue. There's no question about that in the city of Geneva right now. It's got a lot of people, you know, galvanizing on both sides. You know, I prefer really to find the carrot rather than the stick. I, I am concerned if the Police Department is gonna be overwhelmed with calls for this. And I don't want to see the, the police actually lose some of that rapport that they have with, with residents and businesses throughout the city, because I think that's a major piece of, of the city. They represent the city. They're always out there. I think a lot of members of the community and the businesses do see the police. And it's, it's important that we don't overwhelm them, and that we don't help, that we don't cause that to be poor relations with, with the businesses or the people. It is, it's tough. I mean, it is a question of public health. It's also a question, though, of livelihood of businesses and of people that work in those businesses. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear all the conversation tonight to, to see where we go, but if we could, I would rather see some type of a carrot before we go with the stick on this approach. I think that may work a lot better than just coming down and starting a and starting issuing tickets. That's all I have to say right now, Mayor Burns.
Thank you, sir. If no one objects, Alderman Cavan, do you want to speak now? Do you have any questions or comments? Or do you want me to continue on the Hollywood Square approach?
I can go ahead and go now. That's, that is just fine. So we're just going around for your opening questions and things like that before we actually get into the broader discussion and back and forth?
Kind of a combination. If there's a specific question you have to ask, I will announce that Chief Passarelli is joining us. He had a telephone tonight.
Okay.
He is present, of course. Our city attorney, Mr. Sandak, is also present. And of course, City Administrator Dawkins.
Okay.
However you choose to proceed.
All right, well, I do have a couple of questions. Chief Passarelli, are we planning on adding staffing or hours to the police budget if something like this were to be passed and approved?
We have not considered that, no.
Okay. Do you feel like your officers have the bandwidth to support what I would assume would be an extreme surge in calls?
Well, it could be a challenge. But like anything, they would just simply be prioritized like any 911 call for service we receive. We prioritize them and we get to the calls as we're able to do so.
Okay. And this is a question, and I've looked many places to find this. And I'm certainly acknowledging that we're seeing an increase in cases. But do we have local statistics or tracing to show how large, how much the spread is attributed to said businesses? Most of the numbers that I can find indicate that long care term facilities and private gatherings have been the largest cause of spread. Do we have Kane County information or Region Eight tracing information that definitively shows that businesses are the major outlier in what's going on right now?
The information you cite, if you will, is available on the Kane County Health Department's website. Interpretation of that information, of course, is subject to whoever's reading it. But the city of Geneva does not keep said information. That's the role of the Health Department itself.
Okay, all right. Mr. City Attorney, a question for you. If we were to approve something like this as a municipality, I realize that this would amend the ordinance. But do you see any possibility or an increased likelihood of the city facing lawsuits from local businesses or other parties if we were to decide to go this way as the state is not at this point in time?
Hard question to answer, Alderman. I don't think I would foresee any litigation en masse coming against the city. And put another way, I think this ordinance, if adopted, would actually inoculate the city for the following reasons. Assuming, again, this is a legislative decision of this body. But if it were, under the Illinois Municipal Code, nuisance is given, frankly, great deference to the locality to define for purposes of its endeavors. So as the mayor said when introducing this matter, this was not an invention of this staff. I looked at the language before you got it, but it came out of the non-home rule community of Rockford. And there are other communities doing the same thing or something substantially similar. So that's a long way of, long-winded answer to your question. But I do not believe I would, we would foresee mass litigation. It's entirely possible someone could bring a claim. But I believe we would be immune to such a lawsuit because we are simply reacting to an executive order that's been propounded upon us and others to enforce in some reasonable manner. And this certainly is one such reasonable manner.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, which direction do I want to go now? You know, I do have some concern about creating or modifying an ordinance to enforce a state mandate that is supposed to be enforced by state authorities in the Health Department. It doesn't appear to me that the state can physically or really legally enforce. I think that if they were able to, we probably wouldn't be here having this discussion tonight. So, and this is, I guess this is somewhat of a rhetorical question as well. But, you know, is the line of thinking that the 1,298 municipalities in Illinois are all going to have to have this singular discussion and enforce this community by community? You know, our state legislature hasn't met since May. And I think in May, it was a pretty limited scope of what was done. I think that it was essentially to approve some budget, the overall budget, as well as some school funding. So I take this discussion very seriously, and I think that everybody should. But if every municipality is going to have to go through and do this, you know, I definitely have concerns. You know, if we're to move forward with something like this, you know, I guess part of my question, I'm sure we'll get more into this as the discussion goes on, I'm sure everybody has a view. I definitely want to limit the spread of COVID. But let's say we go ahead and pass this this evening, and it goes to the seventh, and it gets approved. Somebody who lives in Geneva, if they can still drive to St. Charles or drive to Batavia or drive to Elburn, I don't know how much that actually stops the spread. I know that it definitely, you know, singles out the Geneva residents and businesses. But I don't know if that's completely fair, which is why I think this should be handled at a state level. And I think that's, I think that's the way that most of this was originally written. And if it was handled at the state level, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. Couple of additional questions. So Chief Passarelli, if this were to be passed, you know, we have the Christmas holiday coming up. And, you know, I've, I know most people are not gathering in large masses. I have elderly relatives in the Tri-Cities area that I haven't seen for months. I will not see them at Thanksgiving. You receive a 911 call from a neighbor who lives in whatever. We'll call it Eagle Brook. Well, they've had a problem with one of their neighbors down the street that they don't care for a whole lot. And they know how many people live in their home. And at Christmas time, there's six cars in their driveway. Are you going to wind up fielding a telephone or a 911 call that says, hey, this residence over here, they got more than 10 people inside of their house? Are we going to be sending officers to individual residences to check on that, to potentially enforce?
Excuse me, I think if we receive a 911 call, we have to respond no matter what it is. That's simply our policy. And obviously, it would be up to this council what direction that then takes going forward.
Okay. Similar type question. What about somebody concerned about the capacity in a store? Somebody says, I was just in such-and-such store and higher than 25% capacity. Same answer, you would have to respond to that call?
Correct.
Okay. And then one more thing that I wanted to bring up is, so if somebody called on somebody, and this one is specifically for a restaurant, a place that had tents or igloos, is that something that they would respond to as well?
Well, I would think it would depend on the circumstance. You know, if it's a concern about the tent or the igloo to assure that they're following mitigation guidelines. Again, any 911 call, we can't be selective when we go. That doesn't always mean there's an enforcement action. Many times, it's just to go check out what the situation was that resulted in that 911 call.
Okay. I bring that one up because I know that a lot of places have chosen to go this route. And, you know, we could sit here and have the debate that should be happening at the state level over what's actually safer, this, that, and everything else. But I know a lot of people have spent money to put these up, and I think even been encouraged to put them up. And something that I didn't know until this weekend, you know, those people would be open to be getting fined as well because those tents, enclosed tents, and those igloos by the state and Health Departments are considered indoor dining. So for places that have those, that's going to be subject to being fined as well. So I think that that's definitely, definitely worth bringing up. Yeah, and I think the last thing that I'll bring up for right now, so I thank you for indulging me. I'm sure I'm on my 12th minute over here. But, you know, I've also heard a lot of people talk about, well, there's all these state grants that you can receive, and there's all this money that's available. And in some instances, that may be, that may be true. The amount that a lot of local places get, I don't think is enough to cover what they're, to cover what they're going through. And something else that I did find was that for most of these grants, when you got to go fill those out, you need to have something which is called a good standing certificate that you have to get from the state. Meaning that in order to even fill out the application for money, you cannot be late. You must be current on your payroll taxes and your sales taxes. And with everything that has gone on for the last eight months for a lot of these businesses, they might not even be able to get the good standing certificate to be able to go through and apply. So I know it's easy to say there's all this money out there, but how much money is there and how difficult it is to try to actually obtain it, I think is something that needs to be considered as well. So with that, I'll take a deep breath, and somebody else can continue right now. Thank you.
If I may, before I recognize Alderman Ruby, I do want to opine on what Alderman Cavan said regarding our state legislature. You're absolutely correct. It's unfortunate that the partner we often seek in Springfield is AWOL. So thank you for saying that. Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. I'd like to start with just a quick question bouncing off of one of Alderman Cavan's comments. The tents, I believe it's written currently that the tents cannot have sides. Is that correct? I know a lot of the tents do have sides, but they're not supposed to. Am I correct in that?
So the way the Illinois Department of Economic Commerce says is if all four sides are down, it's considered inside dining. If two of the four sides are up, then it's considered outdoor dining. And then the igloos are traditionally for one party. So therefore, they're not considered indoor dining because it's only one party.
Okay, so if this were to pass, the igloos and tents with one or two sides only would still be considered outdoor dining and would be okay, would be allowed?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, great comments so far from everybody. Yeah, I have had all the same thoughts that I've heard. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things briefly. So as an alderwoman, my purpose is not to debate science or data. It's to act in the best interest of my community. There's a lot of talk about the city punishing businesses. I can say with confidence that not one person on council wants to do such a thing. I believe we all have everyone's best interest at heart. This is where things get tricky. There is no good answer. There are no shortcuts. There is no way to leave this pandemic unscathed. I invite those of you who are quick to criticize us to run for office and take your share of these burdens onto your shoulders. Defining the right thing is at the root of this conflict. That means different things to different people. My interpretation is protecting our residents and public health, all of our residents. I support enforcement, not because I don't care, because I care deeply. And I implore every one of you to show that you care. Share your values through your actions. Be kind, be respectful, and stay home. You can't have a livelihood without a life. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ruby, Alderwoman Ruby, excuse me. Alderwoman McGowan?
I just want to make sure that everyone can hear me before I continue. Okay. Well, yeah, thank you very much for everyone's comments so far. It's obvious that a lot of thought, careful thinking has gone into this discussion. I really feel like many of you are torn by this issue. I'm stuck in the middle. I obviously don't want COVID to spread unnecessarily. I also represent people in my ward who own a business in Geneva and have shared their concerns with me. They don't know what they're going to do. And they've told me that carryout orders are insufficient as far as allowing restaurant owners to pay their bills. They've got to pay payroll, purchase the food that they use for making meals, their regular bills, their rent. And it's just not happening. A particular resident I spoke with said that they're, well, never mind. It's a very difficult situation. So I'm turned between, and they said that if the city does start finding restaurants for indoor dining, they're in real danger of losing their business. Now, of course, that pales in comparison to someone passing from COVID. I understand very well the reality of that. However, I do have some questions. I mean, I was thinking a lot about the tents as well because that is an indoor dining environment. And I feel that COVID can spread in those tents just as easily as it could in an indoor dining room. So I don't know if we're going to start enforcing, like, all the tents that we've seen throughout the city and making sure that they keep two sides open, two or more sides open. And will that therefore make the tents too cold this winter for people to really go and enjoy? But truly, I don't think that the tents are really the safest environment. And research backs that up. And even with the igloos, if there's a party sitting in there for dinner or for dining, whatever meal it is, and then they leave, and then five or 10 minutes later, another party comes into that igloo, they're still going to be getting COVID. So those igloos are supposed to be aired out for at least like half an hour. And maybe, maybe the business owners with igloos are doing that. I don't know. I don't want to assume that they're not. So I do think that if the council ends up deciding to move forward and institute these fines, that the tents should be looked at as well to make sure that those are safe or following the COVID mitigation guidelines for Tier Three. So I do want to know what the city could do. If we end up voting in favor of this new code and if we direct the police department to start whatever, fining people that are in violation, we have to look at what the city can do to prevent these businesses from closing and going bankrupt because of this. So I don't know what is in Geneva, the city of Geneva's power right now financially to do that. And as Mayor Burns and others have mentioned, it's not just the restaurants, it's other businesses as well. And a lot of people are going to be coming to the city and saying, hey, I'm a salon, we had to close for four months. Or I have this business, I have that business. We're struggling too. And how can the city help everyone? And that's been really tough. Okay, another thought I have is, as has been mentioned earlier, but I agree with this. The state of Illinois created this mandate to ban indoor dining. And they're not providing sufficient financial support to those business owners. So that, to me, is really difficult, sorry, puts people in a very difficult position. It's like an unfunded mandate. I mean, I'm stating what you guys already know. But I feel really, but I feel that the state and the county should be the ones in charge of policing this issue, if that's the case. And as far as COVID spreading in Geneva restaurants, like, people are still going to find ways to go out and get like people are still going to find ways to go out and get together. The, the ones that, in my opinion, don't really care about social distancing. And, um, I think that's unfortunate. I wish that people were being compliant on a much greater level than they are now. But if we, I'm sorry, I'm talking really slowly. Thank you for your patience. If we, if we ban indoor dining in Geneva, it's just like, um, where were we going to allow marijuana to be legal? People are just going to go to whatever town is closest that's still kind of allowing indoor dining to take place. And the, the, um, the spread of COVID in the Kane County area, I believe, is just going to remain the same. So obviously I'm not any, by any means a health expert, but it stands to reason that wherever people are socially gathering, there's going to be community spread. So it seems har, it seems harsh to, um, tell the Geneva restaurant owners that they can't have indoor dining anymore. They rely on the holiday season to sustain them financially through the rest of the year. I, I, we've heard from many restaurant owners that they're in danger of losing their business and having to lose their employees. And, um, and since we're already allowing tent dining to take place, I feel like a more moderate approach would be worth considering. And, um, we should maybe just ask the restaurants to limit the number of diners that they have even more so than they already are. So I don't know if that's possible, but I guess at this point I'm, I hate to say this, I really do. And I, I hope my family isn't listening to me right now because that's how like crappy I feel about this. But I just feel that it's wrong to, um, institute a fine that's going to take someone's livelihood away when, when those people who are dining indoors are still going to find a place to do it anyway. So, um, one last thing before I got to talking right now. I went to a couple of stores over the weekend. Let's see, I was at a grocery store and two, um, like big box stores on Randall. I probably interfaced with over a hundred people in less than an hour just because I was so close with other shoppers and in the aisle and, you know, going through checkout. And everyone that I saw did have a mask, but the masks don't completely cover your face. No one has it like super glued, you know, and fully sealed. So some germs can still kind of get in and get out. I, I absolutely wear masks all the time. I'm not saying that masks are wrong. But I, I got, I got home and I'm like, gosh, I just, I subjected myself to I don't know how many germs going to those stores. Yet we're talking about not letting people dine in the restaurant and then those restaurants losing their business. So anyway, I'm, like I said, I hate this. It's a, it's a tough situation and it's, um, it's horrible all around. But, so I just, um, would like to continue listening now and to see what other people have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGowan. Before I recognize Alderman Kilburg, I do want to give a shout out to the city council. To Alderman Caven's point earlier, 1,300 communities statewide. Will each community have to have, quote, "this discussion"? I will say tonight proudly and unambiguously how impressed I am that this committee of the whole is willing to have the discussion. And I think that sets us apart from other communities, no disrespect intended. As all of you know, a lot of people would prefer this discussion never to take place. But as community representatives, having discussable discussions is or should be part of our DNA. And tonight I think you're showing extraordinary courage and I'm just very, very proud. So Alderman Kilburg.
Uh, I'll try to be brief. You know, I think the communities of Delnor are facing some of the same dilemma that, uh, our states facing, uh, all 50 states across the United States, where a lack of national leadership on this issue. This, this pandemic has, has caused, uh, a variety of different attitudes and different approaches across our nation. Okay, now what's, what we're seeing is this trickling down to the state level and the communities within the state. And now the national bucked it down to the states, now the state's sucking it down to the local community. And they're expecting us to, uh, to be a solution to the problem. And, uh, uh, this pandemic is serious stuff. Just within the last 10 days, I've lost, uh, three friends, classmates, and associates that I've known for 50 years. And that's difficult. Today I received word that my son and my grandson in Michigan tested positive for COVID. So this is real. It needs to be taken seriously. And, uh, the problem is though, with, with punitive actions that we might take as the council, I don't know if that's going to solve the problem. Because it's been pointed out, people can dine in neighboring communities. And Delnor Hospital is going to still have to respond to the emergency calls. And that's not going to solve the dilemma our hospitals and our caregivers are facing. You know, the state's given us unfunded mandates. Now they're giving us unfunded enforceable, uh, regulations that I think we really need to see where the courts stand and what direction the courts give us as far as it relates to this issue of, of, uh, ordinances and enforcement. You know, I think dine in, I think science has shown is, is, uh, is similar to trying to, to walk in front of a speeding train. And to try to legislate and enforce common sense is, I think, pretty difficult to do as a society. You know, I think respond, remind, and relay, I think is important. The state decided to give the counties the authority as related to the CARES Act and the dispersal of those funds. Uh, when we relay, we let the county know if there's a problem. And I think the enforcement rests with the, the health department. And I think with the county attorney, the state's attorney, and the, the county sheriff, if in fact any type of, uh, enforcement is, is to take place. I don't know if it really rests with the community. As we look at responding, I think the way that we respond is as a community. And I think the way that we can best approach this is to really rally the community here for the next three or four months until we can get into a vaccine. And, uh, that would mean that, uh, I would look to churches, the chamber, the city council, our, our city staff, clubs, organizations, guard clubs, homeowners associations, where we would, I would call for a spirit of dine in. And again, that would, you know, I think the, the group that's really getting hurt the most is our restaurants. And I think if we rallied the community, if we reached out to our friends and neighbors and really tried to take full advantage of dine in in our community, I think we can help these, uh, businesses survive and see a better day in 2021. At least at this point in time, I don't think an ordinance and fines is the answer. And, uh, unless I hear another, I hear a good reason that that's going to solve the problem and, and, uh, dissipate COVID in our community, I don't think I'm going to vote in favor of it. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Berghardt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a few questions. Does anybody have the stats for where Delnor or and/or CDH are in terms of beds and capacity as in the last few days?
There is a, with respect to CDH, I, I can't comment. With respect to Delnor, I can, or Northwestern Community Hospital, Delnor, there is a video playing now on our, um, Local Access TV. It's an interview with me and the medical director regarding what's happening at our local hospital. I have received word from the president and CEO of Delnor Community Hospital, as well as others who work at the hospital, that there are, there were, correction, last Thursday, I believe it was, uh, 45 COVID patients. There were also, quote, "near capacity of all beds." I've also been advised that their COVID numbers and general population numbers are increasing as well at their facilities out west. And that they are, as many of you probably saw in the Kane County Chronicle article regarding the interview with one of the nurses, I believe it was Matt Biagi, that they are precipitously close to being full. So you can interpret that as you see fit, but that's the information I received.
Thank you. We talked a little bit at the beginning, I think, about this ordinance not targeting, not designed to target restaurants and bars. Do we have examples of, of other businesses that could be, that would fall under this? That, I, I know Chief Presserelli says they have to, have to, uh, respond to any 911 call. But like, can we, are there other, um, what, what are some other examples where we could see a business being fined? If they were, uh, yeah, it seems like it's, you know, indoor dining is, is kind of easy to tell whether somebody's sitting at a table or, or not, you know. But, um, when you get into some of the other mitigation and tiers and percentages, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Just briefly, Tara, so it could be anything from gatherings of groups larger than the set number. So if, if you're out and about and you see a large party happening, not necessarily, um, as somebody said, just because cars are there, but a, a party happening, it could be capacity limitations for a retail store. Those are just some, not, somebody not wearing their mask potentially. Those are some other examples.
Thank you. Um, so we are talking about private homes could be part of this?
Well, it would be anybody violating the order. So again, if it's a 911 call, we would have to respond. I, I would note that the plan would be like we do now, we work on a complaint basis. So much like code enforcement and everything else, it's all based on complaints.
And then, um, maybe the mayor might know this. When, when these state executive orders were put in place, was there any discussion, you know, on how this would be enforced? Or back in March, were we also optimistic that if we just all bunker down for four weeks, this would be done by Easter? And, uh, we, you know, nobody envisioned, I, I don't know that I envisioned in the spring a future in which our, you know, restaurants and bars would be having indoor dining against the executive order. But I don't think a lot of us thought we'd be here still in November discussing this.
I would agree, Tara, or excuse me, Alderwoman Berghardt, I would totally agree. I mean, who, who among us thought that we'd still be enduring the pandemic for nine plus months now? To the later or the latter question regarding curiosity and concern about enforcement, I believe that has remained a truism since March 15th. When local communities, council members, myself, staff, police officers, the general question and chief by all means chime in, how the heck do we enforce this at a local level? And I'll give you a perfect example of, of Geneva's environment in the evening. For, for many of you, and you know this of course, but for those tuning in, perhaps this might be new. In the evening, we have four, four police officers on the streets. How do we possibly shift resource to, to address all the issues in the community? When in fact, we all know that the issue that I called about is far more important than the issue you called about. That's just human nature. Enforcement's always been a trick bag and there's been, um, a, uh, some very pointed discussions with the governor's office, the health department's office, and others regarding, A, interpretation of that enforcement, B, partnership in that enforcement, and C, cost of that enforcement. So.
Thank you. I think, like everyone said already, I mean, this is a really tough issue. This might be one of the toughest ones that's come before me since I've been on the council. Talking about people we've lost, I did lose a coworker very early on, a former coworker, um, from New York City. He was, uh, had just run his like 100th marathon in March and he died in April. He was like 48 years old, my age. So, um, so I know how serious this is. My, some of you have heard this story. My mom and sister own a dance studio in central Illinois. And my mom started it in her, in my basement when I was like a kid. And 35 years later, it's like, I'm so proud of her. It's this thriving, like, you know, institution, um, trains, just great dancers who go on to be on the Illiniettes and on cruise ships and dance at Disney World and major in dance at college. And also just turns out really great kids who thrive in my mom and now my sister, who's her partner's care. And, um, it's just a fabulous place. And my mom says she's been in five different, so she went from the basement to like behind the bowling alley in our town and like three other studios. She survived her business partner taking half the business with her. A tornado that destroyed the building of her studio. And she says, Tara, COVID is going to kill this business. I mean, to hear my mom who, and again, my sister's down running it really, to, to hear that. So I, I don't take any of this lightly. I know none of us do. And, um, it's not a restaurant, but it's a family business. It's, I work the recital every year. Um, we, you know, this year they did this crazy thing outdoors. Anyway, so I take that so seriously. And so businesses mean a lot to me. Family businesses mean a lot to me. And we talk about people losing their business and that's horrible. But we also have millions of kids around this country who aren't in school. And they don't get a choice. They're just, you know, there, there's no, um, there's no option for the kids to just troop into the building and, and ignore the governor's order or ignore their local school board. And, I mean, those kids are suffering really, there are kids really suffering from not being in school where they get care, meals, and along with support, social support, emotional support, along with the academic education. And, you know, I, I just am so disappointed we're at this place in November. I mean, people, we keep saying eight months, it's, we're 10 months when we first heard about this. I, I just, you know, Dr. Fauci, I guess today said, you know, if given a choice, close bars, open schools. And, um, you know, I, I just feel like as a society, we, we've, our priorities are upside down. And I, there should be some kind of government package to tell these restaurants, just close your door for three months, take care of what you need, and, and we'll see you in the spring. And that's not coming. And so I know that they're, I, I know that the, the restaurant and bar owners are desperate and, and are making, you know, desperate choices. So I, I, as honestly, as I sit here, I still don't know where I am, uh, tonight on this. But I do, I second the mayor. I think it's, um, not to pat ourselves on the back too much, but this is a tough, tough, uh, discussion. And, uh, I am glad we're having it as, as tough as this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kocarog.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody hearing okay?
Yes, sir. A little louder might be perfect, but.
A little louder? Is that better?
That's great. Thank you.
So, um, first I want to say that, um, I do sympathize, uh, with our restaurants and all the stores that are struggling in Geneva. I know my family and me has made a concerted and deliberate effort to support, uh, many of the restaurants through Carryout and Curbside. And, uh, will continue to do so, including shopping local for Christmas and all those kind of things. But our oath, as I believe, our oath as council members says that we will uphold the law. And until the courts tell us otherwise, I believe Governor Pritzker's orders are the law, uh, whether we like it or not. law, whether we like it or not. We have a raging pandemic, and I believe we all have to do our part and make sacrifices. And that includes our restaurants, our store owners, and, and all alike that are being affected by this pandemic today. So, and based on an article, and we've already talked about this a little bit in, with the hospital, but in this morning's King County Chronicle, there was an article about how the COVID unit is full, and COVID patients are spilling into other, other wings at the hospital. I think we have a local problem, and we have a local solution, and that solution includes not gathering in indoor spaces in large groups other than your own household. I ask and plead with the restaurants that are serving indoors to reconsider their operation plans. I don't think it's the right thing to do in terms of public health or public safety, and like many of us, many others of the aldermen have said already tonight, if there's something more the city can do to help you survive the winter without serving indoors, I would encourage you to let us know your ideas. And I'm hearing that there's a big willingness to listen to those ideas tonight, and I'm thankful for that. That being said, I'm not sure that this Geneva ordinance, which allows us to find and further enforce the governor's order, is the right way to go. There is already a law against indoor dining and gathering in large groups on the books. What I believe we need is greater leadership from the county and the state level, even at the federal level with stimulus to help our small businesses. I worry that a local Geneva ordinance such as the one proposed tonight will further divide an already divided city in Geneva and position our own people against each other. So while I'm likely to not vote yea on this proposal, I do not want people to read into my vote that I'm challenging the constitutionality of the governor's order, I am not. I also do not want anyone to think I'm questioning the science that gathering indoors can spread the virus. I am not. But I also don't want to make a bad situation worse. I think we should consider, continue our three Rs, respond to the call, remind them of the law, and relate the violation to the appropriate authorities. And I would hope that the county and the state can quickly add another R, require that we are all on the same page and follow the same laws so that we can curb this pandemic as soon as possible and get back to enjoying all that Geneva has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do have a, oh yeah, Alderman Swanson, forgive me, sir.
That's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I think everyone's made very good arguments on both sides of this issue. As a small business owner, I empathize deeply with the pain and suffering that the restaurants are going through right now in all businesses. I guess the, the way I look at this is the, the future spread of this virus that is getting worse and worse, accelerating significantly, will, will hurt the economy even more as we go forward. And at that point, it's going to take down every business as further mitigations are implemented. So I think we need to do whatever we can to slow down and change behavior to mitigate the virus. I think there was a very good early-on conversation of discussing what we can do to help businesses. I'd like to see us do more. I would propose changing this ordinance, that instead of going into the general fund, that the funds are accumulated if any fines are received, that it goes into a fund to assist Geneva businesses. I don't know if that would be a possible amendment to this ordinance. So I would propose that, or if Stephanie, if you could opine on that, that we could use the funds to assist businesses.
So the brief answer is, as long as we can have a nexus between economic development and funds, we would be able to do so. So that's the short answer. How that's done in the ordinance, you know, it might be more that it's, it's still directed to the general fund because that's where the dollars would come from, but then the council passes a program or whatever to use those funds.
Okay. So I would like to propose that, that we allocate the funds to assist businesses. And furthermore, I think the, the three Cs are the important way to, to control the pandemic, and that's limit crowded places, limit close contact settings, and limit confined and enclosed places. Then the successful countries that have been eliminating or defeating COVID have been focusing on those, and I think we should do the same. I disagree with the approach that if other neighboring communities aren't doing the same, then what's the point? I think then if we, if we all took that approach, the pandemic is not going to get better. So I think taking action now would be the appropriate action. I look at it not as a punitive move, but as a move to try to change behavior and control the acceleration of the pandemic. Thank you.
Alderman Swanson, I believe you have a motion on the floor to amend the ordinance to allow for any and all fines accrued by the city of Geneva through the draft ordinance would be directed toward economic development opportunities to benefit our small businesses. Is that a fair?
That would, that would cover it, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is a motion.
I second it.
I'm sorry, who's Alderman Maladra made the second? Now discussion, ladies and gentlemen, on that amendment and that amendment only. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Swanson. The, the only issue I have with that amendment is, I think the more important component is how do we define that support? How do we distribute? How are we equitable with that? I think there's a much bigger conversation that this body has to have to develop such a program. I don't necessarily think it has to be added to this, but I would like to, I would hope that this body can, can discuss some type of broader support to the business community. Thanks.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor? That's okay.
No, you can, if you want to speak to the amendment as opposed to directly responding to Alderman Bruno, or what's your preference, sir?
Well, I just want, I agree with Alderman Bruno, that we need to have the bigger conversation on what's out there. My intent with this amendment was to show that this is not a money grab, it is not a punitive move in any way, it's to change behavior and, and also to assist businesses. So that was the intent of the amendment.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Maladra, you had your hand up, sir?
I was going to say exactly what Alderman Swanson just said. That's it.
Anyone else on the committee with respect to the amendment and the amendment only? Okay. Alderman Ruby, yes, Alderwoman Ruby, forgive me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Swanson, I love your suggestion, and I, I think the intent is awesome. I got the impression from Stephanie's comment that we could, you know, if this amendment passes, that we could address the financials at a later date, and that would be my preference. The intention is out there, and I just feel like we're, we're in the midst of such a difficult conversation already. This adds another layer to it that I prefer to hold off on, if that makes sense. Provided I am correct in my assessment, Stephanie, if this were to pass, then we could have that discussion after the fact about the allocation?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's my, that's my preference. So I, yeah, I love the intention, but I just, I don't feel ready to, to vote on that right now, even though I support it, I just, I'm not prepared mentally to, to vote on the amendment right now. I feel like my mental plate is already overflowing.
Anyone else on the committee regarding the amendment offered by Alderman Swanson and seconded by Alderman Maladra? Alderman Kocarog?
I would just want to echo what Alderwoman Ruby said. If we could modify that so into Fund TBD and take that off the table for tonight, I think that would make this easier to digest and vote on at the end of the evening. Thank you.
I'm going to turn to our friend in the chamber, Alderman Caven, on the amendment.
I don't, I don't have a real strong feeling one way or another. I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing to redistribute if something like this should pass, that it goes back to the business community. I certainly don't have any disagreement on that, but if we can do that at a later time and continue forward with the discussion that we're currently having, I would be fine with that.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anyone else before we take the roll call? Anyone from the committee? Seeing none? Sensing none? This is on the amendment only, ladies and gentlemen? An aye vote supports the motion as presented, a nay vote rejects the motion as presented, six affirmative votes are required to include and amend the main motion. With that, Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Burghart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, nay.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Kilberg, nay.
Kocarog?
Kocarog, nay.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Merks?
Merks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, nay.
Swanson?
Aye. Swanson, aye.
The amendment, ladies and gentlemen, has passed with a vote of six in the affirmative, four in the negative. The main motion has been amended accordingly. Back on the floor is the main motion as amended. Any additional comments from any member of the council, or excuse me, committee of the whole prior to recognizing our guests in the audience or via teleconference? Alderman Maladra, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So one of the benefits of going first is I get to hear what everybody else has to say, and so I heard a few things I would like to address. First, the question about having local statistics to back up the prohibition against indoor dining. I don't know the answer to local statistics, but to my mind, there are a couple of studies that seem to be carrying the day. Stanford University did a study where they looked at the cell phone records of ninety-eight million people and found that those with COVID most frequently visited restaurants and bars. Johns Hopkins University did a similar study looking at credit card bills of thirty million people and found the most common thread amongst those with COVID was visits to restaurants and bars. So that combined with the input from medical professionals from the Center for Disease Control, World Health Organization, plus the actions taken by governors in all fifty states, to me mean that it's pretty, the evidence is pretty difficult to argue with. And when we asked for local data, I would like to know what's different about Geneva than any other town. I mean, I know that we're special, but I kind of think that the way that we do the restaurant business is the same everywhere. And regardless, even if the question is in doubt, I believe that the right path is the cautious path, not the path that says, well, let's just keep doing what we're doing in spite of the fact that the infection rate is accelerating. There was a, a lot of questions about when the police would respond. I think that there's no real difference. They have to respond now. So the calls, if they increase because we are enforcing it, then yeah, they would have to respond more frequently, but I think that right now they have to respond if they get a call, no matter what. So the question is really, what do we intend to do about it when there are instances of people ignoring and defying the law? The question's about lack of leadership from the county, state, or the federal government. I completely agree with all of that, but I think underlying it all is a supposition that something should be done. And so if we already accept the fact that something should be done, why do we look to somebody else to do it? I don't understand that part. I do understand the power that we would get from regional cooperation. So I would love to see the mayors of Batavia and St. Charles at least do something along the same lines if we do anything. But even if they're not going to, if we feel that something should be done, then we should do it, period. And then my last comment has to do with the things that the mayor was saying regarding our staffing in the evening with only four officers on the street. What I said earlier, this whole thing depends on what we can do legally and whether or not we can enforce it, and also what our objectives are. I think that that comment, Mr. Mayor, gets to, it makes me seriously wonder if we can actually enforce this effectively. So I go back to what I had said earlier, which I agree is a matter for another discussion, but I think a more effective approach, one that actually fits our objectives better, would be to find a way to provide incentives for the businesses that are following the law and playing by the rules. I know that we don't, we can't get into it tonight, but one example, we've already, we've already done some things with our utility bills and with licensing fees. We could just caveat all of that and say, you qualify as long as you're following the law, simple matter like that, and there are probably others. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On the main motion as amended, any additional comments or questions before I invite our guests who are joining us in the chamber and our guests who are also joining us via the live stream and the internet? And there are also people outside, ladies and gentlemen, so just a caution before I recognize Alderman McGowan, we are obviously limited to a maximum capacity in this room. So when those folks who are invited to speak or are with us live, we will have to graciously ask them to depart so that someone else can come in. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Motion for a one-minute break.
I beg your pardon, a one-minute break?
Yes.
Well, I'd like to dispense of the vote, if I may, first.
Mayor, if you have consent of everyone, you can go ahead and dispense with the vote.
Well, but we have not heard from our guests who are with us on the main motion as amended. And I want to hear from those who are joining us live and those who are joining us elsewhere. Does anyone object on a point of personal privilege to break for one minute? There's no objection. We are breaking for one minute. I will set the clock. The microphones will be turned off, and they're off. Ladies and gentlemen, the minute has expired. We are back in session without objection from any member of the committee. This meeting will continue at this time, ladies and gentlemen, as described earlier. We would like to invite our friends who are joining us here in the chamber to provide comments, ask questions. We remind those who will and are interested in speaking that we are talking about the main motion as amended. If anyone has any questions regarding that, simply just ask and we'll clarify. Again, we'll begin with those in the chamber, and then we will go to those who are joining us via go-to meeting. So whomever wishes to speak, welcome, sir. All we ask is that you state your name.
Greg Earl, attorney for Myers, from Myers, Earl &amp; Nelson, and representing Foxfire Restaurant.
Yes, sir.
Regarding this motion. I've heard a lot of conversation, I think everyone can agree about the difficulty and the urgency with everything going on with COVID-19. I just think that there's a lot of statements that sound like facts that aren't necessarily reflective of the community at large. Alderman Caven, you've asked about the data regarding King County, quick search, or Geneva in particular, quick search of the Illinois Department of Health records pulls up the zip code for six zero one three five, or six zero one three four, and there's been twelve hundred cases, zero deaths, since March, since the spread. You can just Google it. There hasn't been no data released on restaurants and bars. There hasn't been no data released on restaurants and bars or other restaurants or other businesses. So, I think while we can make assertions that COVID is on the rise, we are not taking into account how it affects our local businesses. Does it even affect our local businesses? Also, regarding the councils for the city's statement that you have to apply this executive order. The executive order applies to the Illinois Department of Health, which then applies to the King County Department of Health. In your agenda, if I read it correctly, you would then turn it over to the King County Department of Health. You are inserting yourself with a public nuisance where the law already applies. Yes, there's a lack of leadership, as you guys have already stated. Why are you doubling down on that? There's already fines inside the Department of Health Code. Let the due process take its place there. Why not incentivize? Right, but also at the same time, no one has proven that COVID is spreading at any of these restaurants. I think that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you, sir. And just a clarification for everyone who wishes to speak or ask questions, or, excuse me, wishes to speak. It's important to note again, this is not a discussion about bars and restaurants exclusively. So, if I could at least have that commitment that we'll talk more holistically about all businesses and/or the entire community, that would be helpful. Whoever's next, welcome.
I'm Nancy Leighton, and I have the patent house in Geneva. I'm going to talk about family businesses, what we're created on. Geneva's a beautiful, wonderful community that we have, we don't have downtown Geneva a lot of corporations. We have small, family businesses that we've all put our heart and soul and our finances into. We work hard, long hours, all of the businesses in downtown Geneva. If we take the heart away from Geneva, it'll be a corporate town. Somebody will come in and buy the patent house, possibly, in a couple of years, maybe some big corporation, maybe a Hula Hands or whatever, an Applebee's, and we're going to turn into a sad, it's not going to be Geneva. The residents, I'm sure, do not want something like this, and we have to support one another. I don't want to see the coronavirus spread, but we can't have just Geneva stand up to their own businesses and make it harder for us. If you shutter us now, I'll blacken the patent house. It'll have to be black, because I, we've been in this for 10 months. We, I had, I've had 70, 50 employees that I've employed through this last seven years. Where every one of my employees beg for hours to work. All they want to do is work. We're a right-to-work state. We're a right to work, have our businesses thriving and going. We're a right. And let people, we're the United States of America, let people make their own judgments. If they don't feel comfortable to come to a restaurant or go to a shop, I totally appreciate that. I appreciate everybody's independent way of thinking. If they're not comfortable, I respect that, but please respect our, just, just respect our abilities to keep and do the right things for everyone. We don't want this virus to spread. We want to do our part, but we also want to be able to pay our bills and have our employees. Some of these people have never missed a paycheck. My employees are hanging on by the thread, and so am I. And I, if you, if this doesn't stop pretty soon, and according to all of our businesses, the lights will be out, and that's for many, many businesses in Geneva, which is such a shame. I live in the community, I have the business, and there's, everybody feels the same. We love it, but we can't, we can't go 10 months, 12 months, 15 months. You want to close us and let us hang on until next spring? We don't have that capability any longer. We've hung on for 10 months, and we've tried really hard. And I think that we've been a great service to the beautiful, beautiful city of Geneva, and I hope that you'll consider those things for all the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir, welcome.
Hi, my name is Miguel Danueva. I own Del Barrio on Third Street. So, hearing all the other men's and everybody's opinion about either fine people or fine restaurants or business who are not following the restriction, I think it's, it's a little bit unfair for everybody in this town, not just for, for the restaurant business, to everybody. So, because now we are talking about taking a police officer out of the route, out of something important, a call who's really mattered about, try to catch a real criminals who are out there, who knows doing it, and that traffic, somebody driving, you know, on the doings or in an accident. So, you're taking all those hours and manpower out of our police officers to just address, to just come to, to one, two, three, four restaurant per day to find us or get a phone call from somebody and say, it's a, it's a party, probably is more than 10 people there, and they might want to beat them before, maybe less than 10 people, but they're going there and spending their time, important time, you know, instead to be focusing in, 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 in finding people and take money or, or try to close our business. I think it's, it's a bit more important out here to discuss, like, if I close, if I close my restaurant, I have right now about like 20, 22 people working for me. Out of those 20, 20 people who are working for me, I have a, I have a conversation with five of them over the weekend. They are single moms, and they don't, they don't get any help from, from the spouse or the fathers or the, or the kids. And then I'm talking about mothers, single moms, who they just need to come to the restaurant and work and make some tips, make their money. We don't, we don't, we don't asking you guys like, okay, let us do whatever we want. No, why don't you guys instead to find us and try to hurt us even more with taking money out of our account because we had to pay those fines, because we had to close it? Why instead of that, why don't you try to guide us a little bit better? Try to, to be about, instead of, of closing, oh, fine you guys, you know, let's try to, to do the capacity limitation, exactly what everybody's doing in, in the big, big stores. Why they, why don't let us do that? We, all employees who work with me right now and people in this restaurant industry, I can, I can say it, we all are well-educated with the health department. We had to take our health department certificate, ensuring they prove you take those courses about food service, food, everything about how to be extra cautious because, you know, because you're handing out food. And then, then we had that one before even the, everything start. Now, we're getting a little bit more informed. We spending, I'm spending in my, in my restaurant, a lot more money on cleaning products and hand sanitizing and, and try to keep up with, you know, cleaning my, the restaurant, the tables to keep everybody safe, not just the customers, my, my, my family, because I'm going out every day to work out there, and I want to go back to my house, you know, feeling like I might going to got the virus. So, I just asking you, all of you, to be a little more concerned about small business, because if that will happen, you know, make us to close another month or so, especially right now in, in Christmas time. What I was saying, I was saying earlier, you know, my, the five single moms who work with me in my restaurant, they could go check by check every day and don't have Christmas present for the kids, don't have a, you know, it's, it's, it's really, it's really hard this time, and being this time without money, I think it's making everything even worse. So, I just would like you guys considering that and don't put us in a really hard situation financially, emotionally, and, and probably losing our businesses. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Casey Galbraith, I'm with Foxfire Restaurant in Geneva. Thank you for your time today. Thank you for letting me be here. Couple of things that Miguel talked about are, are very true. We've heard a lot of good, good points in our favor. The one thing that we've, we've been discussing is Geneva. The restaurants here, the bars here, you know, we are Geneva, just like the mom-and-pop stores that are here as well. Going with the etiquette of saying that safety and precautions and such, I believe all the restaurants do take those into consideration at this time. I know that we've installed air filtration systems, we've required masks, we've done temperature checks every time somebody comes in. We've done everything that the CDC has required of us to do. The only thing we have not done so far is what the governor supplied, directed, which is to close our inside. We've talked about the tents and such. I do agree, those tents are great, but in the winter, it's been proven that, well, it's been proven, it's been said they are, are petri dishes for more disease than it is for the indoor dining. Indoor dining, you have the air filtration, you have temperatures that people can control. It just, to me, to, to do this with the insides, and I do think it does focus on restaurants in particular, I, I just think that that's moot point. With that being said, I, I think that one thing we're not talking about is how restaurants and bars can work with the city or how the city can work with us as well. Maybe there is a common ground that we can come across that we can help survive. I know we talked about a little bit of the city helping out by paying or giving funds to restaurants that are compliant. Unfortunately, I don't think that will help enough to offset the loss that we will go through. The last pandemic, when we closed, we lost, well, we lost 100% of business and income. When we did dine-in, dine-out only, carryout only, we lost about 85% of our business. I talked to local owners around here, they're going through that now because they're doing dine-out only, and they're not going to make it past November. I think that we do need to have a discussion about what's going on, and I think we do need to talk business owners to city and see where we can come together on something. It is real. We know that COVID is real. We, Foxfire hadn't thrown away our masks. We're not telling people, you know, taking all the reservations that want to come in. I know we made a public case against the, the governor with this whole closure because we felt it was our right to be open, because we do take all those precautions and so forth. As Miguel stated, you know, restaurants are the second most certified business outside of doctors. We have to be clean. We have to know communicable diseases as well as foodborne illnesses and so forth. Governor Lightfoot said restaurants are more safe than family gatherings. So, I know there are mayors that do agree that restaurants are, are being punished wrongfully. What about manufacturing or convalescent homes or other things that are higher than restaurants and churches and so forth? Why are they not being required to do things? Why aren't we getting our temperatures checked when we come into this building? Why are we not watching the, how many people are at the Costco's? It seems like restaurants are the focal point. I know it wasn't stated that they were, but it kind of seemed like that's where it's going. I just hope that, you know, there would be, before we put in fines and restrictions, we would talk and get some common ground going. I know the governor said there should be a percentage, you know, no indoor dining at all or 10 people, that's not going to make it either. I, I just think that there should be, maybe you guys were asking about leadership, maybe the town should take the leadership that the rest of the state can follow. That's just what I think. That's, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jessica Schuessler, just an average resident, but I just wanted to come here.
Schuessler, can I trouble you to spell your last name just so we can?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to say that, you know, this has been a stressful year, and I just find it really disappointing that, that we're even here tonight on Thanksgiving week, just talking about finding our local businesses. I think, you know, us, we in the city, we've had enough stress, and this just adds to it, and, and I'm disappointed about that. And I also want to say that small businesses are what make Geneva, and I know that each of you know that. When I travel to different parts of the state and I meet people and when they hear about Geneva, they know Geneva because they travel to Geneva, and it's really, it's not because of the, the natural beauty, although we have that here, it's really the shops, the, the favorite small businesses that come up in, in conversation again and again. And so, you know, are the small businesses here, they've been through so much, as you guys have, are aware of, and they just, they shouldn't be put through more by their own city council. I just think that you guys should be really standing with your small businesses and, and not move forward with this. And I also want to say that in this country, you know, our rule of law is checks and balances, and unfortunately, that's been something that's largely gone out the window, and the governor, instead of staying within a 30-day emergency rule where he can, you know, you know, make very wide-ranging decrees for 30 days, you know, he's gone, he's renewed that again and again, and again, I think that goes against the spirit of the Constitution which gave him 30 days, and I think that when it comes to this, you know, decree for, for businesses, that it should be the legislature in Springfield that should pass, have to pass laws like that, and really, they won't. They won't pass laws like that, and so I ask you not to, to abide by this never-ending decree. And I just also want to say, you know, where does this end? You know, if, if Governor Pritzker ends up saying that, that people cannot come into our homes unless they're wearing a mask or unless they're part of our, our household, then, then what? Can my kids' friends not come over and, and play games in our house anymore? Like, is, is, are, are you going to abide by that and let the police enforce that as well? You know, the police don't want to enforce this. They don't want, they, they love the small businesses here, and they don't want to go from restaurant to restaurant and find them. And then when, you know, I waited outside for an hour to, to come in and talk, but I heard that you guys amended it to have it be that, you know, that you'll find the businesses, but then give the money back to the businesses. That just doesn't make any sense. And, you know, this is a year that common sense really has gone out the window, and I think we need to bring it back, and I, I just encourage you to, to not do this, and if you don't do this, then I think the other surrounding cities, they're not going to do that to their businesses either. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the chamber who wishes to speak? Yes, welcome.
How are you?
Will, how are you?
Good. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Matt Belding. I'm a small business owner in Geneva. How are you?
Is it B-E-L-D-O-N?
B-E-L-D-I-N-G.
Oh, I-N-G. Forgive me. Thank you very much.
No, you're good. So, one of the neglected, I'd say, service industries, wasn't brought up tonight, was barbering, hairstyling, and things of that nature. When JB Pritzker shut us down in March, you know, it was a 10-person rule at the time, and I believe we're back to that now. My service is one-on-one, and I feel that, as the previous speaker just said, that there's been a lack of common sense and logic across the board when it comes to maybe Aldermen, governors, and even people in the medical field really knowing their lane in staying inside of it, right? We have a constitution, both at Illinois and the United States, and the constitutions are- And the constitutions are written specifically to speak of inalienable rights that are given to us by God and protected by it, not the other way around. This isn't a permission slip. None of us need permission slips from anybody in this room to earn a living. The amount of money that we're out is unprecedented. And I, and I ask everybody in the room, and everybody on those little squares up there, how many paychecks have you been out? How has your life been affected? And there's the answer. Okay, so for the 18% of service industry that's been squashed, which is vital, when we look across the board, we see suicide rates, okay? I get into deep relationships with my clients, and when I see my people hurting, killing themselves, taking their lives, what does that make me feel, other than contempt? And I, and, and, and I urge everybody, as the lawyer who spoke on behalf of Foxfire, the Health Department's got it, right, in terms of the fines? Why are you coming after us for money that we don't have? And where does it go from here? Where does it go from here? Is it going to be forced vaccinations? Or do we have a choice on that as well? Or have I missed something? Has everybody here missed something that has been given away? Because I, I, I came here to look for answers. And Mayor, I look at you, I need you, we need you, we need it, we need it, we need it, we need it. When you look at the numbers, 12,000 positive cases and not one death? How about we give Delnor a round of an F and applause? And we say, let's keep going. Because when we look at flawed science, right, where's everyone's goggles? We can go into it and knuckle drag, through that whole entire science aspect of this, but what we're, what, what we are forgetting is that you have rights, you have rights, you have rights, you have rights, and I have no right to dictate how he lives or she lives. And, 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 and again, to her point, logic has been tossed out the window, and I fear not only what the community is going to look like when, when, when the, when the entrepreneurs have stepped out, okay? When those that are examples for our youth have been crushed, where do we go? Do all of us have to suckle on the nanny state? We don't want to, we want to work. It's as simple as that. It is as simple as that. That is my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Belding.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, via go-to meeting on the screen, there are no more people in the chamber, nor are there any people, as I understand it, waiting outside to speak. So, we will go to those who are joining us via go-to meeting. Our Assistant City Administrator, Mr. Ben McCready, will unmute those individuals, and then we ask those individuals to unmute themselves. We ask those joining us to please share with us your name, spell your last name, and then the floor is yours.
And Mayor, we'll be announcing, I'm going to go down my list here.
Of course.
And give them a heads up, just so you have a minute on your end of things to undo this. I'll be going in the order that you appear here on my screen.
Okay.
We will start with Ms. Kim Weiss. I'm going to, should be able to unmute you here. While we are attempting to navigate this, I will ask, in the interest of keeping this moving, if there's any attendees that do want to speak, you should have an option to raise your hand. It's a little hand option that will be on your app, on your screen. If you do that, I'm able to see you here, and I'll be able to put, turn your microphone on for you. Actually, it looks like maybe one of our people are offline, so. I'm going to attempt to work through this list here, Mayor.
No problem.
We will go to Mr. Robert Johnson. And I've sent you a request here to unmute. Are you able to hear us?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Johnson, thank you, you're now live with the city council.
Hello, Mr. Johnson.
This is kind of unexpected that I was on here, but I want to introduce myself. I've lived in Geneva for 20 years. I recently started a movement called Keep Local Alive. It's all about supporting locally-owned, independent businesses and communities. And obviously, being a Geneva resident, I felt it vital to start this movement and keep it going here. But I just want to chime in, and we've all discussed, I think we all understand how important locally-owned, independent businesses are to our community, what they provide, not only from a financial standpoint, but just overall the uniqueness and character that they bring to Geneva. I, I believe that Geneva as a community as a whole is founded upon the uniqueness of the businesses we have, and certainly don't want to see, you know, a bunch of chain restaurants and big box stores take over this community. I think, I'm just going to be honest, I think the fact that you guys are even considering fining these folks for not listening to executive orders that aren't even, according to what I know, aren't even like legally enforceable, and then you're, now you're talking about a mandate, or I'm sorry, a form of, well, let's fine them, let's distribute it amongst them, that, that's a zero-sum game. I think it is, I, I think we just need to let, well, I'm going to, I'm going to say this. If you guys think that stopping indoor dining and then allowing tents to go up, and having two sides of the tent open, and that's like, I feel like we're just making amends for bad decisions already. I don't know, I guess my whole point is this, I don't think that fining these businesses for staying open and trying to, to protect their livelihoods, and their family livelihoods is a good decision. I think it should be open to the business, I think people should make their own decisions if they want to go dine these restaurants, and they feel comfortable doing that, and that's their decision. If they don't, that's a decision also. I'm, I don't know, I don't know what else to say. I, but I think it's ridiculous that we're going to fine these businesses and then reallocate those funds to these businesses. So, that's my point. I'm, I'm all about locally independent, I think they're vitally important to this community and America as a whole. And everything that we do, or anything that we do to disable them is, I mean, the, the collateral damage to all of this, and I know the last gentleman that stood up there spoke on emotional about it, is huge. So, I think we need to consider everything in general. I mean, Geneva is, we love this place, I love this place, but this place is built upon the mom and pop and the businesses that make it what it is. I think we need to keep that in mind. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I'll be placing you back on mute here. And we do have, our next, we do have another individual who's raised their hand and asked to speak. I'm going to unmute, I've got Mr. Matthew Karas. Matthew Karas.
Hello, Mr. Karas.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I apologize about that, just trying to switch over from the Bluetooth. So, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for the time that they put for tonight, and all the aldermen, and the council, and everyone here, we all sincerely appreciate it. Wish I could have been there in person, wish I had known that was an option. I'd just like to let everyone know, I am, was considered an essential worker as a real estate attorney in the area. People have not stopped buying or selling houses. That industry, if anything, has only accelerated. Not only have people continued home inspections and continued visiting houses and going to open houses, it's accelerated just due to financial concerns and people moving out of the city to move away from these sort of regulations. It has had a detrimental effect on our businesses, at least in real estate, and it's doomed, quite frankly, because people are running from these sorts of, these sorts of, to be perfectly honest, they're terrible, terrible policies. For a couple of reasons, I just want to make it known that even the essential workers that are outside of the restaurant industry, we, we feel the same way, these, these are not going to be policies that work, anyone, for a couple of reasons. So, first of all, it deprives local business owners and individuals of their right to do process, not only under the federal, also the Illinois Constitution. For example, the proposed ordinance, anyone merely accused of violation without a substantiated claim may potentially face fines and costs of litigation, not only for their business owner or their individual, or for the city. Guess who wins in those situations? The attorneys, in the attorney fees. No one likes that. Secondly, first responder resources, and I think we touched on this before. The enforcement of the amendment would redirect our resources of our police officers, and this is the first time we're hearing, we only have four in the evening. God bless those four, they do an outstanding job of our police and other emergency personnel away from core government services. Point number three, local constituent needs. Having a statewide executive order applied in a blanket manner, it does not take into account local differences in public opinion and needs of our local constituents. This type of policy has driven Illinois residents to lead Illinois at a rate greater than any other state in history, and I can attest to that personally. More often than not, when I'm handling a real estate transaction, as of several years ago, if you're selling a house, you're also buying a house, most likely in the area. Nowadays, if you're selling a house, you're moving to Arizona, you're moving to Texas, Tennessee, or Florida, or Illinois, excuse me, or Indiana, or Wisconsin, you're out. They're not moving to Naperville, they're not moving to Chicago, they're not moving to Morris, they're not moving to Mendota. They're gone. And so are their dollars and so are their votes. Point four, economic impact. I mean, in order to support our local economy, businesses need to remain open. They're owned and employed, and employ thousands of local residents who have votes on all of your next elections. Furthermore, businesses and their employees need to support their families and have the opportunity to leave positive lasting contributions to the community. In addition, if businesses cannot afford their rent, or otherwise are victim, resulting vacancies, they're going to be an awful, terrible, detrimental blight upon our community. I first moved here in the tri-city area, over 10 years ago. I remember vacancies in the St. Charles downtown area, it was awful. Thankfully, they're recovering, or were, and now there aren't too many vacancies. It looked awful, it was awful, if we did not meet that here. As I was pointing out before, if there are local businesses leave, guess who's going to move in? If any, if we're lucky, we need to get an Applebee's. I don't think that's what we're all looking for here. I sincerely appreciate all of your time, and I will leave it up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Karas. Was that Mr. Johnson, that was Mr. Karas.
Mr. Karas.
Yes, thank you, sir.
And again, I'd remind anyone who's available online, who's watching us here, it does help me on my end if I see you raise your hand digitally, there's the raised hand icon. I will be going through the list and ask you to respond if you do wish to speak. Well, we have a new guest here on the list, John Riddenhouse. You've joined us this evening, I've not seen any response here in the affirmative, but I will send you an option here in a moment, if you do wish to address council. John, John has self-muted. Kim Weiss.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate it. I kind of got on this at the end of, I didn't realize this was even going on, and I got sure of it. As a small business owner, I've been a resident since 1988. I'm going to say that this topic is even coming to pass with the city council. I understand like everybody else, what we're going through, but I assume that this is a real slippery slope. You guys have a lot of power to make a decision tonight, but it scares the hell out of me, to be honest with you. And I just think that hearing some of you guys talk tonight, it concerns me that we're going to use the four police officers at night to go pull over some guy, or pull some guy out of a restaurant and give him a fine because, you know, he's not wearing a mask, or for whatever reason. I, I just don't see that making a lot of sense. If people are concerned about COVID, they don't want to go out, they don't go out. But to do what, you know, you guys have to be small businesses, it's, it's, it's not right. So, I hope you guys reconsider, if you folks have aldermen, and the ladies that are concerned to go through with this, I, I hope you reconsider, and for those of you that, I think I have shared my opinion, and I just want this time to turn it to the end and say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddenhouse. Okay, and just for the record, we'd like to read the names of folks who wrote to us. We will issue, or Ms. Dawkins will share with everybody present and tuning in, the names of those who wrote to us. We will not be reading their correspondence, as is our practice, and as are the directions on our agenda for this evening's and every meeting's agenda. We will, however, and this is important, we will, however, be attaching these letters, emails, to the official council minutes. And if anyone should ask, when we attach these emails to the council minutes, which we approved, these emails do reflect, as they always have, the email address of the author, and if that author chose to include a home address, that is also included. With that, Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, we received from Bob Johnson, subject, good luck. I believe also that's the same individual who spoke earlier. Roger Karas sent two submittals of St. Charles. Subject is public comment regarding draft ordinance. Brittany Smith, subject, feedback proposed ordinance, Geneva resident. Michelle Langworthy, subject, 1123 meeting. Julia Filipski, subject is the public comment on rule modification due to COVID-19, 1123 meeting. And Elizabeth Colke, subject is COVID mitigations.
Thank you, Administrator Dawkins. Anyone else joining us go-to meeting before I invite the last gentleman?
We have one more who's sent me a message here, I'm going to attempt to provide one more opportunity for them. Ms. Lynn, Ms. Lynn Ball, I'm going to try to enable this so you can speak through us.
Sorry, my mic was not on. Ms. Lynn, Ms. Lynn Ball, I'm going to attempt to turn your audio on here and provide a chance for you to speak if you so wish to choose. And again, Ms. Ball, it appears that through your phone, it is still not connected. If you wish to send me a message, we'll attempt to remedy that. Other than that, there is no one else.
Okay, we do have a gentleman who joined us in the council chamber. I'll ask if Mrs. Silvestri wishes to speak, or is he here just to observe the excitement?
Well, Arnie Silvestri, most of you guys, I think, know me, I'm a local business person. Well, Arnie Silvestri, most of you guys, I think, know me, I'm a local business person here, um, contractor, um, own a restaurant, own a food manufacturing facility. And, you know, I'm going to try to make it real short, I appreciate all the time that you guys put in and the effort and, you know, you guys putting late nights in, so. But, but the bottom line is, the restaurant business in this, in this state is not doing well. Um, you know, we have a strong carryout business, and we still have a very, very, very hard time maintaining the business. Um, you know, I just look at where we're at, and I know from our food manufacturing facility and from the restaurant itself, that there can be standard operating procedures put in to protect customers, protect our employees, protect the people of the community. Obviously, I'm sure you guys have heard it all night about numbers and percentages and all that kind of stuff, um, you know, but we're at the point now where we have to start kind of moving forward and, and not restricting our businesses and allowing people to go and do business with these, with the businesses in our community. And if you feel you're at risk as a person, then you, then you need to stay home and, and make sure that you're not out in public and doing things. Um, you know, because as we all know, the younger, younger portion of our community and of, of, of the public, this, this disease doesn't affect them nearly the same as everyone else. So, you know, I can just tell you from a businessman here, running a restaurant in this community, it's, the aftermath is going to be ridiculous if we don't step up and let people start to reopen and do things and move forward. Um, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll check with Mr. McCready again to see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, who is joining us via the go-to meeting.
No new, no new attendees, Mayor, no new messages or requests that I've received.
Okay. Anyone from the committee of the whole wish to either ask a question, make a statement, clarify anything? Uh, Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Ruby, then Alderman Maladra.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just made a few notes here. Uh, it's come up a number of times that, uh, the city should, uh, like, work out some special agreement with, you know, limited capacity. Uh, I think the attorney would, uh, concur that we are in no way authorized to create a law that would, uh, go in direct conflict with a state edict. That's, can't happen. Uh, let's see. Uh, we've seen some impassioned pleas about, uh, individual personal freedoms, um, but that does not hold, as I said before, that does not hold if that freedom puts others at risk. The person that decides to go to that restaurant in violation of the thing, they might not get sick, but they can bring it home to somebody else. That's, that's what we're tasked with, trying to figure out what to do here. I would like to get consensus, uh, from the council here, that, uh, that we have in as short of order as is practicable, that we have either through subcommittee or, uh, a special committee of the whole, that we do a deep dive into, uh, the, the, uh, some more creative and dramatic ways that the city might, uh, might help the business community.
Alderman Bruno, um, we are indeed going to schedule a meeting regarding that, and you may recall that it will be, uh, part of the discussion, the broad discussion with respect to information we provided to the council as well, touching on what we have already committed, what we already have provided proudly and in partnership with our business community. That discussion will take place in due course after some additional research is done, so.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Um, I would, um, the, if there's one, if I've got one Achilles heel on, uh, on voting on this, it is the efficacy, um, if indeed the rules, uh, the legitimate risks that people are taking in neighboring communities, if, if, if we do this in isolation, um, uh, we're, we're still running the risk, uh, we haven't really solved the whole lot, uh, by doing this in isolation. Now, that doesn't mean it shouldn't be done, or something shouldn't be done. There are, uh, I think, important arguments simply to make the, uh, moral policy, um, just to make a statement, even if it's unenforceable, even if it's, uh, not affectatious. Uh, I would, uh, I would wonder if there'd be consensus on the, uh, or, or I would, I would offer a motion that we amend this, uh, this draft ordinance, uh, to, um, that it would, that we would put a stay on it until neighboring communities enacted, uh, similar enforcement regulations.
Before I entertain a second, I'd like to ask the city attorney, based on the language shared by Alderman Bruno, is that something that you're comfortable with from a legal perspective? With respect to the stay on any action should other communities participate or waiting for?
Yeah, I haven't thought that through. I mean, do I think we could put an ordinance into place that isn't effective until other communities do something similar? It's not something I've been thrown at before, but I, I think if we kind of work through it, there's some, there's probably some problems with that. I, here, I, obviously, the Alderman has a proper motion, I don't, I can't give you a legal opinion right now if that would be an effective ordinance, because it would be triggered by other communities rather than something within the confines of the corporate entity itself. I'm leaning towards this would probably be problematic, but I can't give you an opinion without some research.
Uh, to, to continue with the discussion, ladies and gentlemen, um, there certainly can be some investigation made, there is a motion on the floor to amend accordingly by way of Robert's Rules of Order. If there is not a second, that motion to amend fails. The chair has ruled that there is no second to the motion to amend accordingly, therefore the amendment fails. We are back to the main motion as amended. I believe next was Alderman, check my notes here, Alderman Ruby, then Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Caven.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, Alderman Bruno, I echo all of your comments once again, um, and I was thinking along similar lines, um, I wanted to throw out the, the idea of, um, postponing this vote. Um, I, I think we absolutely have to do something. We, by not enforcing it, we're, we're just choosing to look the other way, and we can't look the other way, we have to address this. How we address it, I, I'm not sold on. You know, is, is a fine the right answer? I, I don't know. I, I would like more time to, um, to think about this. I mean, we've, we've been talking for almost two and a half hours now, I would like for each of us to be able to absorb the conversations that we've had and give the restaurant owners of further opportunity to share their ideas and suggestions. Um, but I, I just think the bottom line is enforcement. Um, it, we have to do something, we, we just, we have to. The, the numbers are just exploding, and people just don't get it, and that's why enforcement is necessary. So, that, that's where I stand. Um, I'm, I'm not going to put a motion out or anything, I just wanted to toss that out there for consideration. Um, I'll let the next person make their comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Caven.
Um, so, I agree with the Alderman Bruno and Alderman Ruby, uh, in that I do think we need to do something, because to do nothing is to, uh, you know, turn a blind eye to the fact that the law is being broken, to the fact that COVID spread is accelerating, and the number of things that just really can't be argued. Um, however, I am very concerned that the mechanism we're choosing to, to do something is just not going to be effective. Um, in my opinion, what we heard tonight, uh, is, is, is a number of businesses saying that they can't pay this fine. We can fine them all we want, but they're probably not going to pay it, and so I'm not exactly sure what we gain by putting another law in the books that these business owners then choose to defy. I don't think that it's good for the business community, and I don't think that it's good for the city. Um, we need to find a way to, to improve adherence to the mitigation requirements, but I think, you know, as we said earlier, I think that the path to that is more through the stick than it is the carrot, and I think that we need to do a number of things to draw the attention of the bodies that are supposed to be enforcing this to the fact that they're turning the blind eye to the problem. Um, so if we do a vote tonight, um, I'm afraid I would have to vote against this, because I just don't think that we can enforce it. Um, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Caven, and anyone else? Alderman Caven, yes, sir.
Thank you, um...
And then I'll ask Alderman Swanson next, forgive me, sir.
Oh, okay.
All yours.
Well, I, I think just as Alderman Bruno said, you know, we, we can't create a different law than, than, than what is out here to, to give slack or leeway to restaurants. I also don't think that we should be changing, you know, a local ordinance to enforce something that's been put before us at the state level. Um, I, I think that if, if, if the state put this forth, and, and this is what they want to do, then that's up to the state authorities and, you know, the, the state health department. And as much as, and I've also heard a little bit that, you know, if we don't do something, then it's turning a blind eye. Well, what we're looking at right here is specifically penalizing Geneva businesses, and if it isn't going to wind up helping, you know, curve the amount of COVID cases, if somebody can still drive two minutes to St. Charles, two minutes to Batavia, to Elburn, to Glen Ellen, to South Elgin, you know, I cannot vote in good conscience with doing something that I know is specifically targeting, whether right or wrong, Geneva businesses, when the rest of the state, if this isn't done on a statewide level, or at least a countywide level, I don't see the purpose in passing something just for the fact of passing it. So, those are my, those are my final thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Alderman Swanson, any comments or questions, sir? Alderman Swanson, sir, any questions or comments before we move forward?
I don't see him on the list.
He's audio only.
Yeah, he's audio only, I know that, did he drop off? Okay. One more chance for Alderman Swanson. Ladies and gentlemen, the main motion as amended is on the floor. Does anyone need clarification as to what that motion is? Alderman McGowan, Alderman Casaroc, I will attempt, I will endeavor rather to, good Lord, that marker leaks, who's got a clean agenda? Yes, I'm going to ask City Administrator Dawkins to read the motion as amended, the main motion.
So, the motion as amended would be to, uh, consider the ordinance amending Title V, Health and Sanitation of the Geneva City Code, and then adding the provision that the revenues would be directed back towards the businesses. And again, specific language would, would come forward when we bring forward and updated, uh, ordinance should this pass this evening.
Prior to taking the vote, I will ask, and I have, I'm going to text Alderman Swanson in the spirit of transparency, that's what I am doing, to see if he is available. If anyone else has texted him as well? Alderman Bergert, you had a question or comment?
Yes, I had a comment, well, I did want to give us time to see if we can get Alderman Swanson.
Absolutely.
Back, so. Um, I just put the, oh, sorry, is Bob there?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I got disconnected, I'm back now, I'm sorry about that.
Alderman Bergert, or Alderwoman Bergert has the floor, then Alderman Swanson has the floor.
Okay.
I apologize.
Quite all right.
Um, I'm just, I'm sort of disappointed what we heard tonight from several people in that, um, you know, if, if you're, if you aren't healthy, or you are scared of the virus, stay home. I mean, I think that's why we're in this mess. I mean, you know, we're not, we don't live in a bubble, even though we use that jargon, it's, um, you know, that's why our schools can't reopen, because even if kids can shrug this off, to operate a school takes custodians and teachers and secretaries and food service workers and, um, you know, I, again, you know, the people that go into the restaurant, and, and I get it, I miss eating in, I miss celebrating, I'm going to miss being with my parents this week, because I'm doing the right thing and, and staying home. Um, my kid misses being at school, my, you know, we all are missing, and I think all of us, it's been a struggle for us as a country, that we're in a pandemic, we're in like a once in a century pandemic, and it's, I think it's sometimes hard, because we can still go through the Starbucks line, and we can still order our Amazon packages, and we can go to Meyer, but like, there's suffering, you know, there is suffering, there is gonna be suffering, there's going to continue to be suffering until we get this under control, and, you know, to say, well, if you are scared of this, stay home, like, you know, that's not an option for people whose jobs require them to be in the world, the people that deliver our mail, the people that run the Walgreens, the people that allow us to go to Meyer at eight, nine PM on a Monday night, um, the people that drive public transportation. And so, when you eat indoors, and maybe you think of COVID, you, you're going to come into contact with people that, you, you, you spread it, you, you spread it. And, um, I am frustrated too, because I, I guess I wish, if you're going to eat indoors, and again, I love our dining establishments, and I know restaurant owners, and I feel for them, just like I said, my mom, I lose a 35-year-old family business over this, I, I get this, but, um, you know, when you, if you dine indoors, or you're in a bar, and you, um, you know, you get sick, you're going to call 911, and the paramedics are going to come, and they're going to take you to Delnor, they're going to take you to CDH, or, and if you need to get a, a, you know, be on a ventilator, they're going to find one for you, and, and so, i- it's all, you know, unless the people who tonight said, well, you know, you're scared of it, stay home, well, okay, then, if you want to, you know, say you, you'll turn down medical service, you won't take advantage of our world-class care here in Geneva, um, that, you know, you'll just stay at home, struggle to breathe, I, it's just, man, I, I am so, I just am, um, but I know this is not what's before us, but I, I just can't believe that's where we are as a society, where it's just kind of every person for themselves, and, hey, I'm healthy, and, you know, well, I know a healthy 30-year-old girl who's super fit, like, super fit, like, instead of coworker of mine died after running, you know, who'd ran 100 marathons, so pretty fit, um, 30-year-old girl, had COVID, did okay, was miserable, but did okay. Well, last Friday, she was in for an EKG, because she suddenly has a heart murmur and high blood pressure. So, let's, we don't know how long that's going to affect her, maybe it's just a thing, but maybe that'll follow her for the rest of her life. So, um, I, I think what, um, back to what's on the table, Alderman Ruby asked if we couldn't postpone this, um, I think a lot of us need some time to, to think and talk, and again, figure out if there's a better way maybe to do this, with the, uh, Mr. City Attorney, would be the right motion, be to table this, or table this to a date certain, um... be to table this, or table this to a date certain? I'm up for discussing how we want to do that, but I guess I kind of felt like I wasn't sure many of us were really ready to vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the...
The attorney's microphone is muted. I think he wanted to talk.
I think so, too, yeah. Mr. Sandak, are you interested, or Alderman Swanson, forgive me, sir, anything else?
That's okay. I agree with Alderman Ruby and Alderman Berghardt. I think we have two approaches here. We were, we were discussing the stick approach, but I think there is a carrot approach as well. I would support, and I would make a motion to defer this, or table it for two weeks to a date certain, and come back with other options, or revisit this option if necessary.
Is there a second to that motion?
Ruby, second.
Ruby seconds it, on a motion to table for two weeks. Mr. City Attorney, Roberts rules of order. Two weeks is December's... This is a motion to postpone. Discussion on the motion to postpone, is that permissible, Mr. Sandak? Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yeah. No, I guess I was just unmuted. Something was going on. I had a green light in my little square, but whatever. Yeah, a motion to postpone or continue to, was it December 7, the next date?
Well, that's the date that it would go to normally, but irrespective, the question is whether or not it's debatable.
I mean, it is, I'm sorry, it is not debatable, and it's, you can take a vote right now.
Can the chair make a comment prior to the vote?
Sure.
Okay.
Certainly.
December 7 is two weeks, ladies and gentlemen, that was the original date suggested, if in fact the main motion was to be, was to be advanced. A small correction, ladies and gentlemen, I'm referring to the cheat sheet, and I could not read it. However, according to this cheat sheet, I'll invite Mr. City Attorney to correct me, a postponement, to postpone is debatable according to our City of Geneva Elected and Appointed Officials Guide to Common Roberts Rules of Orders and Actions. So with that, unless there's objection from the City Attorney, we can have discussion on that. I'll begin the discussion, and that is this. Two weeks hence is December 7. It's my opinion that to delay a vote on the main motion tonight, to postpone the vote on the main motion tonight, accomplishes very little. I believe it signals to the business community uncertainty, it signals to the community in general uncertainty, and I think the reality is, as most of you know, we can always revisit the issue if necessary, but that's just my opinion. So with that, the motion is debatable, so is there anyone who wishes to speak to the issue with respect to postponing till December 7? That would require, of course, a committee of the whole meeting on December 7. Which there is one anyway. Alderman Kilburg has the floor.
Couldn't hear you, Dean.
I don't think he can hear us. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Clarification, what's the difference between a postponement and a table?
A table is to actually take this matter off the table. A postponement is simply to delay the matter for consideration to a future date.
Well, I think it's, it's verbiage, because essentially we're tabling it, we're tabling it for two weeks, and we're postponing it for two weeks. What's the distinction? What's the difference?
It would need to be resurrected. Postponing to a date certain means it's scheduled for presentment in two weeks. Tabling means it would not be set up.
Well, I think, if she'd have said it was tabled until December 7, to be reconsidered December 7, are we saying the same thing?
Well, I think we are saying the same thing, and I think the intention is, is to kick this thing over and visit it on the 7th. The question is, right, the question is, if we're not tabling it, we're simply continuing to the, to the 7th, it's alive and available, and it will be on the agenda, versus tabling, it would not be on the agenda, it would have to be resurrected at a later date.
Well, but I think their intent was to table it for two weeks. I mean, I think it's the interpretation of the word postpone and the word table.
According to our cheat sheet, Mr. Kilburg, a motion to suspend for further consideration, or I move that we table it, is not debatable. I interpreted the motion to be postponed.
That's right.
Therefore, it is debatable.
So could I ask for clarification on the terminology of the motion, what the motion is intended to be?
I would like to, I would like to postpone for two weeks in order to allow all of the city councilmen to absorb what we've been discussing, and if possible, I would like to see any sort of incentive programs that we could use to take the carrot approach as opposed to the stick approach.
Ladies and gentlemen, prior to, or after that clarification, thank you, Alderman Swanson, there is no way, there is no way within two weeks we will have any semblance of a financial or policy relief program in place for thorough consideration, there's just simply no way.
Understood.
And I say that because, as all of you know, there's other issues coming down the pike that's going to keep us all very busy.
Nonetheless, I do feel that there were some in the city that felt they did not have adequate time to process or be heard, so I don't see any harm in delaying it, allowing us to absorb it, and bringing it back in two weeks. So a postponement would be the word I would use, Dean.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Caven? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess I would just add, with what I'm hearing with some of the people that are talking about postponing, if we're wanting to look at some different type of program or something that you're calling the carrot rather than the stick that we've been using this evening, and you're not real excited about the one that's here, I mean, isn't it, isn't it just possible then to take the vote and be away with this one, and start over from scratch, and take that time and have those discussions, rather than leaving this one sitting out there for two weeks if people that would like to see something feel that this is too harsh just so we don't have this any longer? I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I guess that I would add that we can always come, you can always come back with some type of an incentive program, or trying to, you know, trying to persuade people to abide by the orders rather than, rather than fining the businesses, so.
Mechanically speaking, Alderman Caven, you are correct, that if this matter should be voted on tonight, and if this matter should not advance to the council, there is always another opportunity to perhaps revisit the issue under a different structure. Anyone else on the matter to postpone? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I did not really get the sense that the majority of the council was not prepared to vote on the agenda for this evening, or even the agenda item as amended, so I could be wrong, but that was just my, my take on the situation, and I feel prepared to vote this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else on the matter to postpone? The matter, or I should say, excuse me, the motion to postpone was seconded, the vote right now is to postpone till December 7. That is the only issue being voted on. A simple majority adopts that motion to postpone. With that, Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Berghardt?
Berghardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, nay.
Brad, can you hear me? Is that a, nay? Nay, is that correct? Yes. Maladra?
Maladra, nay.
Rich, can you hear me? Are you muted?
Alderman Marx?
indicates nay.
Nay.
McGowan?
McGowan, nay.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
And Bruno?
Bruno, nay.
Ladies and gentlemen, the affirmative are three to postpone, the negative are seven. The motion to postpone fails, we are back to the main motion as amended. Any last minute questions or comments prior to taking the vote on the main motion as amended? I believe, ladies and gentlemen, we are ready to vote on this matter. With that, again, a simple majority advances this matter to the December 7 city council meeting. Anything less than a simple majority, the matter fails. Ms. Dawkins?
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, nay.
Casarog?
Casarog, nay.
Maladra?
Maladra, nay.
Marx?
Marx, nay.
McGowan?
McGowan, nay.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, nay.
Berghardt?
Berghardt, aye.
In the affirmative, ladies and gentlemen, are three ayes, in the negative are seven nays. The motion to advance this matter to the city council for full consideration has been defeated. With that, I can't read my agenda.
Or public comments if there's any left.
Any last minute?
Or new business.
New business or public comment? Mr. McCready, anyone? Any new business for anyone joining us this evening virtually? Any committee members? Alderman Caven? I like the blast.
I can go ahead and certainly make a motion to adjourn, but I don't have anything else that I'd like to talk about this evening.
That's pretty new, I like that. There is a motion to adjourn, ladies, oh, wait. Alderman Kilburg? Yes, sir.
In light of the outcome of this vote, I think it's important that we start to look for a possible carrier, and I would suggest that economic development, the chamber, have some discussion, and I would encourage some type of a public forum as it relates to the things that we can do here locally to support our businesses and try to help them survive the next three or four months. And I threw an idea out that came forward in Batavia, where that close circle of friends, your network through your club, or your church, or your homeowners' association, where you formalize some type of a process where you're going to get in and patronize these restaurants with carryout, and, I mean, there's other things that we can do with other businesses as well, but it seems like the big voice that we heard tonight was pushed back from our restaurants. And I think there's some things that we can do, but it just takes organization, it takes communication, and I think there's a lot of people in Geneva that are prepared to stay home, yet support these businesses, but I think it needs to be an action item, it needs to be something that needs to be formalized, and it's something that, you know, even as our council, each of us, if we reached out to our network of six, seven, eight, nine, 10 friends, and on a weekly basis, make a commitment that you're going to patronize these businesses and help them weather this storm, I think we can get through it. And I think, as Alderman Swanson said, I think, let's talk about the carrot first rather than something punitive, and I think that, I think we can rally this community, we've come together in so many different ways, in support of so many different activities and projects for the good of the community, I think this is one that we can get done. And we'll come out on the, on the, on the other end of this, and, you know, we'll have our businesses intact, and we'll move into 2021, that second and third quarter, and it'll be in the rearview mirror. So I just think that forum through either chamber or economic development, I think, and to come forward to the council with some ideas, and then reach out to our organizations, our clubs, everyone, and I think that there can be something positive come of this. I think it was a good discussion tonight, and I think we all came to the conclusion that this isn't the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bruno, Alderman Casarog?
Thank you, Mayor. To piggyback on what Alderman Kilburg said, I will, I will use my network, as modest as it is, to make sure people support compliant businesses in town. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Casarog, and then Alderman Berghardt.
I would just like to say, I felt like I heard that it was most of the people on the council that really did want to accelerate our discussion about what we can do to help restaurants, and I know there's important things coming up, and I'm not at all judging how much work would have to go into all that, but the more that we could do to accelerate that conversation as a council, I would be fully supportive of, even if it meant possibly an additional meeting, maybe not on our typical Monday schedule, because I think it's that important, and we devote that, that time and energy to it. So that was it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And of course, I think we're all in agreement with respect to the importance and urgency. Keep in mind that at the celebration of 2021, that first week, you will receive our first crack at discussing the budget, so we can start building that program within the confines, the ramparts, the limitations, and/or the joy of a 2021 budget. So, good point. Alderman Berghardt?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Again, a good discussion, I'm sorry if I got a little passionate, I just...
No, that's good.
I just can't, I just can't, I know all of us feel the same, we just can't, can't believe we're in this, these numbers are just skyrocketing, and anybody who reads healthcare, stories of healthcare workers on the front lines, especially in any like isolated hospitals, I just read one about Omaha, where they're the, really, they're the only game for about 200 miles in town, and it is, it is frightening, very frightening. I did want to say, we heard from a lot of the restaurants, and I honestly felt, the restaurant owners, I was heartened to hear that all the cleaning procedures they're taking, and they really do feel like they're trying to use best practices. Some of them mentioned us being, maybe implementing some kind of capacity limits, as Alderman Bruno said, that's certainly not in our purview, but there's nothing to keep these restaurant owners that are choosing indoor, to allow indoor dining, to take their own self pledge. I'd love to see the restaurants that are choosing indoor dining to come up with their own pledge, or something that they choose to limit, to self-limit to a percentage that they feel is safe, and, you know, again, there's nothing stopping them from doing that, and certainly using that as a tool if they're going to tell diners about what they're offering. We do know bars are tough places to social distance, and all of us have walked by some bars in town where you people, people are shoulder to shoulder to shoulder to shoulder, and, you know, I hope the bar owners who are choosing to serve, try to figure that out, because that seems to me the most dangerous of situations, where you're having a few drinks, talking to friends over loud music with your mask down, it's a recipe... talking to friends over loud music with your mask down, it's a recipe for disaster. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, let me share with you again how proud I am of the discussion and the debate tonight. No one should apologize for their passion, irrespective of your opinion on the matter, but I think that other communities will look to us and say, to have such a difficult discussion is exactly what city council should do, so, well done. With that, Alderman Kaven, I suspect you have something to say?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn by Alderman Kaven. Ladies and gentlemen, a roll call vote is in order in order to adjourn. Let's show Kaven we want to stick around.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Kilberg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghardt?
Burghardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you again. Be safe.
Good night.
Stay warm.